Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during tonight's meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form. They are available at the entrance and presented to our city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call the order and I will convene the City Council meeting of the City of Grand Terrace. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Bill Hussey and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Robles. If you would all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. He will rescue the poor when they cry to him. He will help the oppressed who have no one to defend them. He feels pity for the weak and the needy and he will rescue them. He will redeem them from violence and oppression for their lives precious to him. God, we are humble servants before you. I ask you to guide the council so we may serve you, Lord, and so we may serve the residents of Grand Terrace. God protect our men and women in service. Bless this great nation of ours. Protect our first responders. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem. Madam City Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Robles?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, but I did want to welcome our Colton Joint Unified School Board members, Pat Harrow and Joanne Thoreen Ojeda. And I don't know that anybody else snuck in without me seeing them. So, thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate your presence. And we will move on to our consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. I have no requests from citizens or those in the audience tonight for removal. Would my colleagues like to remove any of the items from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to pull number four.
Okay, that's the check register?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other items?
Okay. A motion to move the remainder.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the balance, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. All right, approval of the check register, B4. Councilmember Wilson.
Mayor, if you please, there is a check here for $186,139.44 and I just wanted to find out what Stater Brothers agreement it ties to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. That payment is part of the agency's economic development agreement with Stater Brothers. So, several years ago, the redevelopment agency made an agreement with them that if they were to return a certain amount of full-time employees and part-time employees, we were to reimburse them for that set amount. And every year for the last four years have submitted proof of that, and this is their fourth payment. And that was paid out of the redevelopment agency's fund.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, this has nothing to do with parking or anything?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have an item for clarification on. It's Packet Page 35, check number 72257 to Progressive Solutions for $1,000. And it's a dashboard interface for software, and I understand what a dashboard interface is, but I'm curious what software we have installed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We use Progressive Solution Systems for our code enforcement and our rental code track software databases. And this dashboard allows us to quickly capture monthly data, statistical data throughout the year, and quickly show it as a graph. So, we're hoping that this helps us track our code cases on our rental program easier.
This is a one-time cost?
This is a one-time cost, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the check register? Okay. I'll move the check register.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. We'll move into public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. I may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Are there any request-to-speak forms? Thank you. Our first request is from Anthony Cortez.
Hello, council. Anthony, you are President of the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce. I have two announcements. First is our holiday decorating contest winners. Our third place residential is the Myers family. Stater Brothers donated a gift card. Our second place residential is Carrington, the Carrington family. Fiesta Village donated four Supreme passes. And our first place is the Giles family. Jazz Kitchen from Disneyland donated a gift certificate. Our first place business winner was New to You. They get a half-page ad in the Blue Mountain Outlook. Our block was Orangewood Court, the top part, and there's 12 families and they get four packs of free skating at Cow Skate. Our next is, our chamber luncheon is going to be February 16th at 12:00 noon. It's free admission for everybody, but if you'd like to eat lunch, it's $10. It's going to be here at the City Hall in the community room, and our guest speaker is Mayor Darcy Magna Bo. That'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Congratulations to all of those who decorated and were chosen as winners for this year's contest. Are there any other members in the audience who would like to speak at this time? So, not on this item, I will close public comment at this time, and I will move into our council communications. We'll start with Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Just a quick thing. On January 16th, myself and the mayor, I'm sure she can announce, we had the honor to attend a birthday celebration for Ewan Richmond. She became 100 years young. Her granddaughters hosted the party at the Brooksdale Senior Living Residence Housing. It was a real pleasant get-together, and I got to take a little walk around the facility. Really nice facility, and it's pretty neat. They had a little wall honoring their veterans, the residents there, so that was pretty neat looking at that, and they had what branches of service they were in their picture, so that was really neat. And another short note, myself and Mayor Pro Tem, we did, January 13th was a community get-together to talk about Pico Park and some recommendations, so I know it's part of our agenda tonight, and the city manager's going to highlight on that part in his comments. And one last thing, the Community Benefit Fund. You know, this fund was voted on by the council, and we still have some youth sports that need to take advantage of this. I just met Renee Walker at the Donut House Saturday, had coffee with one of the residents, and she was putting up the soccer sign-up, so I informed her about the fund, and she really didn't know anything about it, but I gave her Miss Fortune's information, so I like to see that, you know, really posted on our website, just pop out there. But I know the Little League got to use it and some other residents and community foundations got to use that fund. You know, as a city, you know, we voted for that to help these community activities, you know, as our parks. We know how much cost of everything is and stuff, and you know, as former coaches, you know, we're a lot out-of-pocket, but as a city, we want that fund to be utilized for the full benefit of the community. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Our next is Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I see that Lowbrow Inc. has resurrected itself in a new location, and apparently had at least a soft opening last Saturday. And then, I'd just like to thank everybody for participating in our government. Congratulations, you're here, and it's a big thing to us, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Jackie Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank everyone for attending tonight. I really like seeing all your faces here and having you participate in the meeting. I went through McDonald's the other evening and saw the coffee with a cup is going to be held on February 16th at 7:30. So, thanks to our source department once again for coming out and interacting with the residents, and of course, to McDonald's for hosting. And then, I just have a comment. I went down to the park to play with my son this past weekend, and the overall condition of Pico Park really, I know we talked about this recently, Mr. Duffy, but just the basketball courts need some restriping, and the benches and the tables are just in really need of some TLC. That wraps up my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mitchell. Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia Robles?
Yes, I failed to mention a couple of items last council meeting from December. I just wanted to report out that I attended with Sandra Molina the V Trans Board Meeting in Evelyn on behalf of the city to ask for adoption of agreement between V Trans and the City of Grand Terrace to operate senior shuttle service utilizing a donated V-PAN surplus vehicle. And I also visited the senior lunch program and had an excellent cabbie de ro meal. This January, I attended the AMETRANS Administrative and Finance Committee meeting. I will hold the report until the items are acted on at the next General Board Meeting, not to avoid being redundant on the actions. I also participated in one half-day strategic planning session for AMETRANS on January 19th. It was an extremely interesting and creative process. I will provide a full report and copy of the results for council members when I receive it. But it was quite exciting. We talked about some pretty innovative transportation linkages, and I'd be happy to really go into fuller detail when I have all the data. I also, during our holiday luncheon, Lieutenant O'Brien had a cup of Starbucks coffee, and I thought, "I'm not going to go down the hill, I was too tired." So, I went to Chills, and I went to Chills again today, and their coffee's absolutely excellent. We got there early and they let us in even though we walked in through the door before they were open. They have coffee, is Wild Goose Coffee, and it's roasted in Redlands, and a portion of the proceeds from the coffee goes to food banks. There's been like 640,000 pounds of food already donated, so because their breakfast program really didn't take off, they open at 11:00, and so if you think about coffee, try them. The cappuccino's absolutely excellent. Also, I noticed that the City of Redlands has coffee with city council members, and I'd like to throw out there that perhaps this year, we alternate having coffee with a city council member, that we kind of hit some point of stability and be nice to have, you know, that interaction with the community of where we stand and have them provide some feedback to us. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I attended the Metro Valley Studies Session for Sandbag on January 14th, and I will report on items after the regular board meeting. I have one other item, and it's just a request to our city manager, or perhaps staff. We had a Habitat project update last on our Michigan properties, and during that last update from Habitat, they asked for an extension on their project. And so, I'm wondering where we might be in the scope of that project, and if we have a clear idea of when we might be building a house, or two houses, I think, that they had planned. I know I was just at a recent Habitat project in Riverside County, so I'd really like to see Habitat in San Bernardino step up and show that they're doing the good things, and I'm sure they are in other parts of San Bernardino County, but I'd really like them to do it here in our hometown. And that's all I have. We'll move on to public hearings. Item E. To speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request-to-speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or somebody else raised at the public hearing, described in this notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And tonight, we have one public hearing, which is a continuation of an economic development incentive agreement with OneSource. Staff is asking that we open and continue the public hearing to February 23rd, 2016, city council meeting. But I will take public comment on it tonight if there's somebody that came that wanted to talk about it. Okay. I don't have any speakers slip in front of me, so at this time, I would like a motion from my colleagues to continue the public hearing to February 23rd.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest you open the public hearing officially and then...
You want gavel?
Yeah.
Gavel, all right. We will open the public hearing for the Economic Development Incentive Agreement with OneSource Distributors. And I will call for public comment, and there are no request-to-speak forms, so I will entertain a motion to continue.
I move to continue the item to February 23rd.
Second.
Okay. So, with motion to continue our public hearing to February 23rd, 2016, motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Okay, thank you. So, we will continue that. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have three items in unfinished business. The first one is an adoption of zoning code, Amendment 15-04, relocating and amending the existing prohibition of marijuana dispensaries to the zoning code, and an amendment to Chapter 5.90 to Title V prohibiting issuance of a business license for medical marijuana dispensaries. And this is a second reading of these items, so I know we do not have a staff report. Do we have any request to speak on this item? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move adoption of zoning code amendment 15-04.
Second.
Does, Mr. City Attorney, does my reading of that count as reading by title only, or shall I have the city clerk do that as well?
I have the city clerk read the full title.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California to amend the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by adding Chapter 5.90 to Title V prohibiting issuance of a business license for medical marijuana dispensaries and rechapering an amendment of the Chapter 9.28 of Title IX to newly create a Chapter 18.91 of Title 18 to preserve local authority in regards to regulation and prohibition of marijuana dispensaries and cultivation.
Thank you. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. Our next item is an adoption of an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings in Construction, establishing Chapter 15.62 Flood Plane Management. This is also a second reading, and I have no request to speak on this item, so I'll bring it back to council for consideration of motion.
Madam Mayor, make a motion for approval.
I second motion.
Madam City Clerk, will you read the title, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, adding a new chapter to Title 15 Buildings in Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code.
Thank you. There's been a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Okay, thank you. And our last item in this section is adoption of municipal code amendment amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to add new Section 10.04.462 to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. I have no request to speak on this item, so I will bring it to council for consideration of motion.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and second. Madam City Clerk, will you please read the title?
Yes, Madam Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, adding Section 10.04.462 Temporary No Parking to Title 10 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Pro Tem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to new business. Our first item of new business is the adoption of a resolution of support for Cradle to Career Roadmap. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, the city manager. Tonight, the council's being asked to adopt the resolution of City of Grand Terrace in support of the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Cradle to Career Program. The implementation of this program is consistent with the council's goal number four, to implement successful partnerships, work collaboratively with public sector agencies to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth in our community. It also is very important for the future economic development of the city and the county, and investment in one of the most powerful resources that we have, and that's our youth. The roadmap ensures that every student has access to the necessary tools to begin college or career upon graduation. It identifies key milestones in child's academic career and professional social readiness, while encouraging partnerships with all sectors of the community to support the goals and meeting the educational needs of all students. The Cradle to Career Roadmap marks the lifelong journey of continuous learning. So, with that, I would ask council to adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace in support of San Bernardino County's Superintendent of Schools Cradle to Career Roadmap, and we also have speakers here tonight.
Okay. So, I have two speaker slips with me. The first one is from Mike Snellings. If you would come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor Magna Bo, city council members, city manager Duffy. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Mike Snellings. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services for the Colton Joint Unified School District, and I'm here on behalf of Jerry Almendares, our superintendent. Mr. Almendares is currently on a plane to the statewide superintendent's symposium in Monterey and couldn't be here this evening, and he does send his regrets. I'm here to thank you this evening for demonstrating the city's commitment to our students by adopting the resolution in support of the Cradle to Career Roadmap. I would also be remiss if I didn't thank each of you individually, because I know that as council members and as members of the City of Grand Terrace, you have expressed and shown your interest in our students and supporting our schools by participating on bond oversight committees, by attending our community cabinet meetings, by attending school events, and by supporting your students who have participated in our district, and we really do appreciate that. The roadmap, if you look at it, is actually supported by five pillars, and those pillars are representing education, parents and family, business and labor, community and faith-based organizations, and government. By your adoption of the resolution tonight, you're showing the city government's support of the Cradle to Career Roadmap, and you also had pointed out that we have two board members here, our board president, Pat Harrow, and Ms. Thoreen Ojeda, who are showing the education support. We also have members of our district staff here, as well as a principal, and I would also like to recognize one of our faith-based organizations from Azure Hills Church who are here to support the Cradle to Career Roadmap as well. So, on behalf of Mr. Almendares, thank you. I do believe in the collective impact effort where we pull all of our resources together as a community, and if we're all heading in the same direction and pulling in the same direction, that will be good for our cities and it will be good for our kids, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Snellings. My second speaker slip is for Stacy Diaz.
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you very much for having me. Stacy Diaz with the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools in our Governmental Relations Department, and on behalf of our county superintendent Ted Alejandre, we would like to thank the council for expressing how important this work is of our county-wide vision, the San Bernardino County Community Cradle to Career Roadmap, a collective impact approach to achieve our county-wide vision. It's a journey to lifelong learning where every student has the mindset and disposition for college and career readiness. Not only does it recognize the academic and career readiness success indicators, but just as important, the personal and social readiness success indicators. And the fact that you guys have adopted this resolution and following the City of Colton, we really appreciate that support, and thank you for recognizing this work and how it will actually have our economy and the vitality of it as we need to move forward in this next journey that we're working with, not in just education, but with all sectors of the public. So, thank you very much for taking the time to recognize this as important and adopting this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Are there any others that would like to speak during this time? If not, I will close public comment and come back to my colleagues for discussion. I wanted to first say, though, that I believe that this is a really powerful program, and I did have the opportunity to attend many of the meetings, the first and second year that this was beginning, and really enjoyed the way that we had businesses, educational professionals, we had the students come, we had governmental officials, and we had parents showing up to these meetings. They were very well organized, and the program that was put together for each of the days was very well thought through, and very much a good use of people's time bringing the different perspectives together to have discussions, to move forward, to help engage students, and as a goal to raise test scores. In our school district, I can't imagine that there's anything more powerful in this area than really all of these groups coming together for that reason, for that goal in mind. And if my colleagues would like to say a few words?
I would. I'll come back.
Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving us the opportunity for this night. Being that my two sons graduated from Colton High School and were part of the Colton Joint Unified School District, I couldn't be more proud of the teachers, the staff, and the faculty there. You know, when you have a baby and they come out, you know, and it's like, "What am I going to do?" The first thing you want to do is, "I want my kid to go to college." You save, of course. You know, I realize how much college is, but you want him to go to college. And as they're going through the steps, you know, you work with the teachers there, you know, to prepare the kids, you know, they find out their weaknesses, their strengths. And as a parent, you're involved. That's the best thing to do, is get involved with this, you know, be involved with the teachers, the schools, you know, volunteer. I mean, that's why I always say about Grand Terrace, it's full of volunteers. And it works, you know, you find, you know, what your sons or daughters need for your Cradle to Career. Unique thing, my oldest son graduated from college last year, and my youngest son, he graduated from a tech school. The same mother, same father, but one son likes to work with his hands, the other one likes to work with his brains. Proud of both of them. That's what United States is, you know, that's what makes our country great. You know, we have a whole bunch of wide variety of people out there that like different interests. But, you know, as a parent, you know, that's what you want. You want the best for your kid. You want your kid to succeed. You want them to do better. And my hat's off to Colton Joint Unified School District and San Bernardino County for this. You know, we want every kid, you know, it's hard out there. We want every kid to have the opportunity to advance in their life, to succeed in their life, but thank you once again, all the teachers, faculty, staff, I mean, all the way down. I mean, it was one big family when my sons went to school there, so thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I really like the collaborative approach, how we're looking at both parent involvement, education, the government, business and labor, and the community, and faith-based, along with our students and teachers and faculty. I think it's critical that we all continue to invest in our children, and I think overall we will really develop some really well-rounded individuals. As Councilmember Hussey has stated... As Councilmember Hussey has stated, my child has been a part of the Colton Joint Unified School District for quite some time. He, about nine years, nine years. He'll be going to high school next year. He started a little early. And we've gone through a variety of services, and it's just been a great experience for us. And I would like to thank our school board members for being here, Stacy and Ruben. Good seeing the both of you again, and of course, our other members that came out and spoke. But thank you again, and I'm looking forward to this collaborative partnership. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, too. I enjoyed attending a couple of years of community cabinet meetings, and also Councilman Hussey and I participated in with Superintendent Alejandre having a workshop. And it makes you feel like you're contributing something, and it makes you feel really part of a vision, and I'd like to see our rankings go up, and I really hope that happens, and I think we have the kind of people that will make that happen. And having said that, I'll yield the microphone, and I just want to thank all of you for the kind of dedication that you bring to your professions and to your school board roles. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's extremely important, obviously, to have a game plan, and a lot of our children as they grow up need to be able to recognize or count on that game plan, there's no doubt about it. Some of you know that I am involved in the, I guess you'd call it the antithesis, and the antithesis is, when you don't have a game plan, and you grow up and you decide to, you know, start a family before you really have any formal education to back you up, I'm dealing with people now who I am helping learn how to do math, learn how to read, and when they're somewhere between the ages of 22 and 45. So this is what we get, and you know, sometimes it helps to understand the antithesis, to understand how valuable a circumstance is. And the only thing that I'm concerned about is that a very, an extremely important part of this building block system is the years between one to five. And with our current system, it's a sacrifice for one or the other parent to be able to be there, to be helping your child, to get them through those first five years, those formative years, and that's really what sets a pattern. And so I hope we can make those kinds of commitments to get them on the way, and then I think this kind of system works. Thanks.
Thank you. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace in support of San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Cradle-to-Career Roadmap.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll be in motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbow voted aye.
Thank you. We're very happy to support these efforts, and we look forward to seeing the results of them. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We'll move on to Item 10, which is the approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Arbor Pro, Inc., for tree inventory services. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. For the record, Adrian Freeman, Management Analyst with the Community Development Department. This staff report supports our 2030 vision, goal number two, to maintain public safety by investing in critical improvements to infrastructure. On October 27, 2015, the City Council approved the use of one-time money from the 2014-2015 fiscal operating budget to fund a number of quality-of-life improvement projects and programs. One of those allocations includes $15,000 for a tree trimming inventory service that will be used to implement a five-to-10-year master pruning cycle. On November 24, a request for proposals was issued or advertised on the city website and emailed to various arboricultural firms, and that's November 24 of 2015, of course. Six proposals were received. Of those proposals, Arbor Pro, Inc. offered the best proposal, addressing the full scope of work at a price within the project budget. At this time, staff is recommending that council take two actions. First, to approve a professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Arbor Pro, Inc. for tree inventory services. And secondly, to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Staff is happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Thank you. Does council have any technical questions of staff? Okay, none at this time. We will open up to public comment if there is somebody that would like to speak on this item. Seeing no takers, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Arbor Pro Incorporated for tree inventory services, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Did you get mine?
Revote, please.
Revote, please.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbow voted aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to Item 11, which is approval of Interstate 215 Barton Road Cooperative Agreement between the San Bernardino County Transportation Commission, or Sandbag, in the City of Grand Terrace. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item, first of all, for the record, I am Sandra Molina, your Community Development Director. This item does promote the city's 2030 strategic plan to maintain public safety and promote economic development. As council is aware, and I'm sure the community is aware also, the Barton Road Interchange Project will improve traffic operations and reduce traffic congestion on Barton Road and ramp intersections through replacement of the Barton Road overcrossing, reconstructing widening of the Barton Road, realignment of on and off ramps. Construction is scheduled to begin in spring of 2017. This cooperative agreement defines the roles and responsibilities of Sandbag staff in the city relative to design, right-of-way, and construction. Some of the responsibilities of Sandbag included in the agreement is for Sandbag to fully fund the project, provide project management, right-of-way acquisition, business relocation, and to address any city requests for project betterments. And also to include city staff in the ongoing meetings related to the project. The city's responsibilities would include providing permits such as encroachment permits, inspections, reviews of the design plans and construction plans, and acceptance of properties through title transfers, and those would be particularly remnant properties. And also with respect to utilities to exercise its rights under utility law to cause utilities to relocate or rearrange its utilities based upon the project design. With that, staff would request that the City Council adopt the cooperative agreement between Sandbag and the City of Grand Terrace. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be available to respond to comments.
Thank you, Director Molina. Do we, does council have any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. We'll open up public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item at this time? All right, seeing no takers, we'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to council for consideration of motion.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Oh, excuse me. Can I have a comment?
Further discussion? Councilmember Wilson.
There was one item here, considering our changes here recently, it seemed to me would make more sense, under Section 2D of the agreement, that the city manager be the authorized agent in place of the CDD for this agreement. We're looking at packet page 150, and that would be Roman numeral 2D.
Oh, D. I heard you say E.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And the reason is, we're having a reorganization?
Yes, correct. A city manager designate would make sense to me.
All right. So you're requesting city manager designate?
City manager or designate.
Or designate. Colleagues all agree on that change? Okay, so are you amending your motion to have that change?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am amending my motion.
Okay, and the second, do you agree with that amendment? Okay, so we have motion and second of amended contract. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbow voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Item 12 is the award of contract for Pico Park sidewalk improvements. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. This item promotes 2030 strategic plan with respect to promoting public safety and implementing successful partnerships. As indicated in the staff report, the purpose of this capital improvement is to provide ADA access to an existing baseball field that is accessed by both city residents and the public, including Grand Terrace Little League. The scope of the project includes an accessible sidewalk from the parking lot to the field and includes a level concrete pad for bleacher stands. The Pico Park sidewalk improvements was advertised for bid on December 15, 2015, and was advertised on the city's website, as well as five plan rooms. Six bids were opened and recorded by the city clerk's office. The bid analysis determined that the bid from Omar Taha Construction failed to provide the required bid bond and thus was disqualified as non-responsive. The lowest responsive bid for the Pico Park sidewalk project is R-JS Construction in the amount of $18,135. Representatives of RJS Construction is present in the audience. Once construction is started, it is expected to be completed in 15 days. Staff recommends that the council reject the non-responsive bid from Omar Taha Construction, authorize a ward of construction contract for the Pico Park sidewalk improvements to RJS General Construction as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $18,135. And finally, authorize the Community Development Director to approve change orders not to exceed 5% of the ward of contract, which would result in a total project construction budget of $19,042. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff? Okay, I will open to public comment if there is anyone that would like to speak on this item. Okay, no request to speak forums, and nobody coming forward, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
A motion to approve items, I guess, I guess they are, 1, 2, and 3. Should I read them, or can we just go with?
Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbow voted aye.
Thank you. Item 13 is a report on the Grand Terrace Circulation Fee Program, and this is an update. We are looking at a receive and file report. May we have staff report, please?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, apologize for the delay. This item supports our 2030 vision and strategic plan to ensure fiscal viability. The purpose of this report is to provide the council an overview of the circulation fee program update. At the next council meeting, staff will recommend introduction of an ordinance to adopt new circulation program fees. Attached to the staff report were a series of exhibits, but also the report that was prepared by TEP Engineering, and Craig Newstetter of TEP Engineering is also present in the audience. To provide a bit of background, the City of Grand Terrace enacted a circulation fee program in 1998 in accordance with the provisions of AB 1600. The program imposes fees on new development to cover their fair share cost of new circulation improvements, and it has been modified several times since then. In 2005, Sandbag adopted the Development Mitigation Nexus Study. The study identified circulation improvements in each Sandbag member jurisdiction, which are eligible for partial funding from the Measure I major arterial funding program. At the request of the city, Sandbag incorporated the arterial component of this circulation program into the Nexus Study, thereby making those improvements eligible for partial funding from Measure I. The purpose why I indicate that in the staff report is to stress the importance of our arterial program and its potential funding sources through Measure I. As indicated in the staff report and in the study, there is an established methodology that is followed. Essentially, projects are, and this is very simple, it's not technical, but projects are identified, costs are estimated, the incremental growth is determined, the number of trips that are, vehicle trips that are generated by future growth is then estimated, and that future growth is responsible for a percentage of the cost of future projects from which they benefit. An important factor to keep in mind is that the analysis and ultimate recommendation is that the fee must not exceed the new development's proportional fair share contribution to the need of proposed improvements. And really, what that means is, let's say, a arterial project is estimated to be $500,000, but it's only the incremental growth that pays a percentage of that $500,000. And so over time, that full amount won't be funded through the program because we can only charge it to new development and just a fair share proportion, so I just wanted to clarify that. And with respect to the program, and this was in the report and the study, this is the methodology that's used. If the council wanted to have more information on that, Mr. Newstetter is present, and there's also discussion in the report. I'm sorry, council members, this is in your staff report, page 229, and this identifies the arterial improvements, and this other exhibit is the traffic signal locations, and this other exhibit that's on stamp page 232 identifies the operational improvements, which consist of right-turn lanes and medians. The study, when it went through the entire analysis of updating this report, what it found is that there's actually going to be an increase, excuse me, a decrease to our traffic impact fees related to signalization, arterial improvements, and operational impact fees. And the reason for that is that in order to be regionally consistent with Sandbag's Nexus Study, the factor, a fair share cost component factor was used, and that factor is lower than what was used by the city in the past, but it's important to be consistent with Sandbag, and when we use that factor, the traffic impact fees do end up being reduced from what they were before, and that was included in the staff report. And this is a, also not very easily readable, but stamp page 235 of the council's report shows those three programs and what their cost currently is and what their cost will be under the program, with that last, the last part of the table showing the total cost and the difference.
So for clarification, did we use a fair share percentage before?
Yes.
Okay, this is just one that we are using in accord with Sandbag to be in agreement with them, and it just happens to be a different factor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With that, Madam Mayor, I would conclude my presentation, but I would remind the council that Mr. Newstetter is present to provide further technical expansion of the program if the council desires more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none at this time. I'll open public comment. No request to speak forums for this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for entertainment of a motion and further discussion. We are just looking at receiving and filing the report.
A motion to receive and file the report.
Second.
Okay, motion to receive and file. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbow voted aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go to city manager communications at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things.
Just wanted to provide the council with a quick update on a few items. One is, one of the things the council approved in last year's budget was video streaming of the city council meetings. The city clerk and I met today with Exella to look at their civic platform, and it looks like, should be around the first meeting in March, we should actually be going with live streaming and also with streaming on demand in the future. And it's really a compliment to our existing Exella software. Then in, in the future, we can expand to electronic voting, and it'll be much easier for the council on that end, too. But I'm really excited, I had a demo today, and it was really a very interesting, easy format for, for the citizens to move forward to. And also, we have C Click Fix, which launched on Monday. C Click Fix is a, sort of a way that citizens can report issues. Let's just go to the screen, we'll give a quick little demonstration on how this works.
C Click Fix is a tool to report non-emergency issues to City Home. Built to be easy to use for anyone on the go. When you see an issue, take less than a minute to report on C Click Fix. First, hold the app and press report. Then, press the camera icon to take a picture or video from the app or your image gallery. After that, the app uses geolocation to capture your exact location, or you can manually choose your location or address using the map tool. When you press issue title, you'll be able to choose from the request types that your local government provides. You'll finish up by including a brief description of the issue, such as where it is, what it looks like, and any other important information to help your local government fix the issue. Then, press done, and then submit, and you're ready to go. C Click Fix, a simple and valuable way to help you build a stronger community.
So what this will do is it'll allow citizens to actually download the app under their smartphone. They can, as you saw on the screen, they can see graffiti or anything that's an issue, and they can then take a picture, and it also has that geolocation. But the interesting thing about this, we looked at this product as a tool for trying to get reporting information in terms of our work orders. But this, this product is kind of twofold. One, it allows us to have a simple work order system, but it also provides residents easy access to report items. And so once a resident, say, reports graffiti and they send it in, they will be kept up with a notice in terms of when that has been completed. So it's allows a complete loop on how to close out, out the process, so it's really good. Also, I wanted to mention that now when you get your yard sale, your yard sale permits on a regular basis, we will be posting those on our Facebook page and webpage. So if you sign up for your yard sale permit for that weekend, anyone going to a yard sale can actually go to our website or our Facebook site to find out the location of where your yard sale is going to be. And so if there are multiple yard sales, you can actually get a map of where each yard sale is in the city. Also, we are currently rebroadcasting the city council meetings on Thursday and Saturday. So what you'll see is, this meeting today will be rebroadcast on Thursday along with the previous meeting of January, I believe, the 12th. And so we do two council meetings back to back. And so check Channel 3 for your, for, there's a listing in terms of the times and the dates for each one of those council meetings. And I believe, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't want to mention if I can't, I'm sorry, Mayor, about the facility meeting ad hoc, facility naming and ad hoc committee.
That's our next item, though, right?
Okay.
And, and the reason I'm going to cut you off right now is because Councilmember Mitchell says that she has a question.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Duffy, on the C Click Fix, if it's an item that doesn't have a quick fix to it, so say if it's something beyond graffiti, like maybe a tree, a cracked sidewalk or something like that, or something that may be, may have a need to come before council, can we notify the resident or the reporter on when that agenda will come to council, or what sort of follow-up can we provide in items like that?
So absolutely, what will happen is there's a standard menu of things that occur, but there's also a description you can type in, this is a particular issue. And then that will go to, if it's a public works issue or a city manager issue, the email will come to us, and then we will be notifying the resident. They'll get an automatic email on where it was sent, we can update them. And if we're going to need to go to council for a major issue, we can certainly stay in contact with the resident on that. So the item remains open until we actually close it out and the residents notify of that.
And the app knows, so say if it's graffiti, it would know to go to public works or something like that, so the resident doesn't have to self-select it automatically, knows by the selection?
That is correct.
The reporter has made.
Yeah, what we've done, we've preloaded where it should go, so we have a list of all the categories, and then it'll go directly there. So it's really very simple for the, for the resident. See, click it, and we'll fix it. That's hopefully about the solution.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll move to our item 14, which is the Facility Naming Ad Hoc Committee Update. Mr. Duffy, did you want to begin that?
I did, Mayor and council. So the ad hoc committee met, we had quite a good turnout for Facility Naming Ad Hoc Committee. It was, I believe, the overall suggestions were to, yes, the community wanted the park renamed, there were several, there were three names actually mentioned, and there were some additional ideas and concepts on how to enhance the park to really take on the flavor of its new name. And so with, with that information, I will be coming back to the council with the recommendations that, that we heard, and giving the council an opportunity to hear the issue again and take staff's recommendations or add additional information.
Did either of our ad hoc committee members want to make any other comments? Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to thank all the veterans and the residents who came out that night and voiced their opinion on the, the name and on the change it. And, you know, it ended up being a very positive meeting. We had a, you know, went from a naming a park to a lot of positive input on what we could do to enhance also that park. And then, you know, of course, the focus, you know, the Freedom Wall, I mean, that's what got it going, and, you know, my hat's off to the Freedom Foundation for that. But, you know, just, just working on that, just, you know, honoring our vets, our men and women in the service. I just think, you know, I, I don't want to say like a holy ground, but just, you know, a ground to recognize the veterans. And, you know, and I talked to a lot of residents after that, and they came up to me and talked that they want to voice their opinion and stuff, but they couldn't make it. But, you know, I just got a lot of positive influence on, on the residents in Grand Terrace, too. But I'd just like to thank all the people, once again, who came out and made a positive meeting, I think it went rather well, and that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I just want to let the public know that the minutes of the meeting are absolutely excellent. If you want to get a detail of what we discussed, it's all there. It was a very, very vibrant meeting, a lot of creative solutions and strategic planning, and I really hoped to see us implement some of the concepts there.
Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues who are not on the ad hoc committee?
I just had a couple of questions, they're more clarification questions in regards to the meeting minutes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. One is, page 254, Jim McNebo, the cost, you did not know the, the cost of the name, let me put my glasses on so I can actually read. It stated that he did not know the cost of the name change and had already talked to the city manager of the possibility of moving dumpsters. So I'm not sure what, what that, that comment means. Are we looking at rearranging some of the park? Is that what the discussion involved?
Mr. City Manager? Josie's mentioned in the comment.
Yeah, a, a part of the conversation was the cost for a name change, and that was based upon staff's comment about the monument sign for the facility. In addition to that, there were other comments about how to enhance the park. And one of the things that was mentioned is that now that we have the Freedom Wall there, the trash, the brick trash container actually obstructs the view from the street. And so we talked about that and other ways to enhance the park and relocate the, the trash dumpster. It was one of the things that, that Mr. McNebo had, had suggested that, that we, we consider.
And the reason that I'm asking on that, with the condition of the benches and, and the, the tables and the striping, that maybe this can be an, an effort that we look at spending some of the funds that we have for parks, to maybe do a facelift of the entire park and be strategic on how we do that, maybe move the dumpsters and do a little bit more and invest in that park and really make it as beautiful as it should be for our community.
Absolutely, and I think one of the things that the committee talked about was that back in September, the council hired MIG consultants to do assessment of our existing parks, and one of the things that will come back to the council is a recommendation by the committee, is that, that we have MIG look at ways to enhance and incorporate, as you said, those, those, those funding mechanisms that can, can be fees, could only be used for improvements in the parks to enhance the, the Pico Park or the, the new name park.
So what is the timeline on this, that it will come back to council? Do we, do we know that?
It's going to come back on, on the February 9th meeting.
Did I read that somewhere?
He said February 9th.
Okay. I thought maybe I didn't read it somewhere. Okay, February 9th. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Councilmember Wilson?
Mayor, I'd like to refer to the, the city attorney, Councilor Adams. Would this be the appropriate place to add a suggestion for one of the names?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I think it's going to be brought back to you for action. However, I don't see that there would be anything wrong with providing information at this time.
In that case, I would like to recommend, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it to the ad hoc meeting, a possibility of Hugh Grant Memorial Park to be considered.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I do have two request to speak forums for this item, so we'll go to public comment at this time. First speaker is Dennis Kidd.
Dennis Kidd, 22874 Pico Street, Grand Terrace, California. I would be in favor of, of retaining the name Pico Park, because P.O. Pico, he was the last Mexican governor of California. However, he was a Californio, and so when Mexico became part, or when California became part of the United States, he stayed in California and became a citizen of the United States because, because he loved California, and California was his home. So I would be in favor of, of retaining the name Pico Park. However, if, if, it sounds like you're all determined to change the name of the park.
Well, we'll be talking, we'll be talking more about it next meeting.
Sounds like it's a done deal, so.
February 9th, we will be discussing that, Mr. Kidd.
So anyway, so I could, if you have to change the name of the park, I could support Doug Wilson's proposal for the change it to Hugh Grant Memorial Park.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. We will be discussing that on February 9th. And our second speaker's slip is from Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, Walland Avenue. Little bit of history. Many of you are familiar and remember, and you maybe participated in the naming of the high school and how contagious that was, because it was in Grand Terrace, they named it Grand Terrace High. Of course, most of you know the story. What some of you may not know, but some of you were here back then, I can't remember the timeframe, a couple of years back, about the naming of the Grand Terrace Fitness Park. I can't remember if some of you were up here or not. But it was circulated a little bit, what are you going to name the park? It was in the newspaper, Margie's paper, Grand Terrace City News. Some names were thrown out, they were pushed around, and one of the names upset Mr. Dennis Kidd here, and I was a little frustrated. And one of the reasons, and a lot of people always ask, where's Richard Rollins Park and stuff, but everybody knew where Pico Park was because it was on Pico Avenue. And I don't know why it got named Pico Park, but anyway. So it spurred me to go out, and I, for those of you who remember, I returned in 300 signatures of the community, since these parks do belong to the people. So I got 300 signatures, well, actually 25% of those, 25% was Bobby Forbes helped me with, so I can't take all the credit. But the overwhelming majority, and it was verified by Joyce Powers at the time, economic director, I guess she was, and, and so on and such, and we ended up with the name Grand Terrace Fitness Park. So everybody knew where it was, and everybody knew what it was. So for the vast majority of the public who always participate, so to help them understand where the park is and what the park is, I always try and prefer to listen to the people, go to the people, and maybe you already have. I'm sorry I missed the meetings, I'm a little tied up with my dad these days, I don't get out as often as I used to, and I don't have the time to go out and get 300 signatures for this either. So in your, in your desires to, I'm, I'm not agreeing with the renaming or disagreeing with renaming, I'm just here to feed some history, some common sense, and make sure you go out to the people, the people's park, and if they're fine with the names, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm just telling you what has happened, what we've been through, and hope we don't go through any mistakes again. And the people always get frustrated when the city council, the bureaucrats, the politicians, whatever they want to refer to, doing things that they disagree with. And of course, they're never here to really complain about it, except on Facebook, as many of us see. So if you put it out in the paper, hey, we renamed the park, and you may have already done that with the ad hoc committee request, because I saw that, I just couldn't make it. And you hit, there's some of the names, here's your opportunity to speak up or forever hold your peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no takers, we'll close public comment, and I will thank my colleagues on the ad hoc committee for their time and effort in this particular issue, and we will conclude that item. Oh, we have one more comment. Mayor Protem?
Well, thank you, Dennis Kidd, because when we were talking about Pico Park, everyone would just say, well, it was, it was named Pico Park because of the street. And I just want to, I'm not endorsing your, your position, but I was on a state Parks Commission, and Governor P.O. Pico's house is in the Whittier area, I guess, and I should have known that because his adopted children are Robliss's. So it was kind of, so thank you for setting us straight on the history of the street. Thank you.
All right, our next item is a closed session, and we will be recessing to closed section to address public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Title, City Manager. Thank you to all of those of you who came out, and if you are not here when we return, we will be having our next regular city council meeting on Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, at 6:00 PM, right here. An agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office, no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. So at this time, we are on recess to closed session.
Thank you from who?
There's crayons.
No, it's a crayon.
All right, we will reconvene to open session. City council met in closed session to review public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title city manager. There are no reportable actions. So at this time, I will adjourn city council meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, February ninth, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding this meeting. Thank you to my colleagues, and thank you to staff. We are adjourned.